...budge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
In part allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for the many blessings you have given our city and we pray for our continued growth. We pray for the family of Councilman Higgs as they mourn the loss of their aunt Ella Shelton. Let them find comfort in your presence. We pray for the continued safety of our children and families in our city in your name. Amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich, here. Spatelli?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Here.
Torres?
Here.
Higgs?
Yeah.
Emerson?
Here.
Warple?
Here.
Rakels?
Here.
Vines.
Here. Let the record reflect nine present, zero absent. Moving on to the Hammond Common Council Scholarship Drawings. Ms. Terri Myrick from the school city of Hammond, welcome.
Thank you, and once again, thank you so much for having me this evening and for helping me to draw the winners of the Hammond Common Council Scholarship. I actually put at each of your places, I gave you a list of all of the scholarship applicants so that you can follow along with us. At each school, we have determined how many scholarships we will give out and then we always do a first and second alternate for each school. But let me share with you some numbers. I was sharing with Janet before the meeting that our numbers are up. This year, we had 158 applicants for the scholarship. And I think one of the reasons that our scholarships are up is the numbers are up in Hammond. And I think it has a lot to do with a program that we're offering in Hammond called the Blueprint Class where we have students their senior year enroll in this class and we have teachers that actually help our first generation students going to college navigate that whole scholarship, college application, FAFSA, all of that. They do college tours. And I have seen a noticeable difference in the number of scholarship applications that are coming from our Hammond schools because of having teachers who have knowledge in that base. You know, we have parents who don't know how to navigate that scene, but if we give our students the support, they seem to do better at doing that. And so I'm really pleased with that. Not only do I deal with the Hammond Common Council Scholarships, but you know, we have a Lilly Scholar this year from Morton High School and I've noticed on other scholarship application committees that I sit on that we've got an increase in number of applicants. So I'm really pleased to share that with you. How do we decide how many scholarships are given to each school? My secretary sends out an email and finds out from each school how many seniors at their school are Hammond residents. And then we base that upon the total number of seniors that are Hammond residents. This year, we have 876 Hammond resident seniors. At Bishop Knoll, there are 31, so that gives them 4% of the scholarships, which equals one. Hast has 47, which gives them 5% of the scholarships, which is one. Clark has 159, which gives them 18% of the scholarships, which is two. Gavitt has 179 resident students, which gives them 20% of the scholarships, which is three. Hammond High has 166, which gives them 19% of the scholarships, which is three. And then Morton has 294 seniors living in Hammond, which is 34% of the scholarships, which is five. And if you total those up, that comes up to 15. So, and at your next Common Council meeting on Monday, May 14th, we will be here with the winners to introduce them to you. So without further ado, let's go ahead and get started with the drawing. We'll start with Bishop Knoll and if somebody wants to help me with the drawing of the Knoll students.
You'll pull, that's fine. I'm going to do one is the winner and then we're going to do two alternates, Councilman. So our winner is Justin Winfrey. Okay, and first alternate. Erica Guerrero is our first alternate. And our second alternate would be Monica Magellanis. Okay, thank you, and that's it for Bishop Knoll. We'll go ahead and do Clark next. A little bit, let's see, Clark has two scholarship winners. All right. The first winner is Erica Patino. And our second scholarship winner is Jaclyn Vega.
Right above her.
Okay, let's do two alternates. Our first alternate is Miguel Padilla. And our second alternate?
The last three.
Is Anna Alvarez.
And just for a point of clarity, can you tell us how the alternate works?
It would be as if, if one of your two scholarship winners at Clark don't accept the scholarship for some reason, then it would go to the first alternate. And if the first alternate doesn't take it, the second alternate or if for some reason, you know, it kind of depends upon sometimes if they get various scholarships and then they can't accept another one, that's where that would come into play.
Also, you're saying if they receive another scholarship, they can't accept this one?
Well, it depends. It depends upon how much money they get in scholarships and they might not then say, well, I'm not going to use this one because I get money from the school or somewhere else. So.
Okay, the next one would be Gavitt.
Dan. Even though it's in my district, I'll let fellow Gavitt brainiac in. This room's loaded with Gavitt brainiacs.
All right, Gavitt actually gets three scholarships and two alternates. Okay, the winner of the first scholarship is Chloe Barnes.
You win.
Winner of the second scholarship is Ciara Bolden.
Right down.
That's the second one on the list.
I know. And the third scholarship is Iris Ramirez. You got to pick the alternates yet? Okay. Let me get the right. Okay, alternate number one. First alternate is Madison Moreland. And our second alternate? Giselle Padilla.
What was that one again?
Giselle Padilla is the second alternate.
How's that spelled?
P-A-D-I-L-L-A is Padilla, Giselle, G-I-S-S-E-L-L-E. It's the last one on the page, the first page.
Thank you.
Dan, I let you because you were part of the first graduating class there, so.
Okay, the next one we'll do is Hammond High. See if we can't mix these up a little better. It seems like we're getting them in bunches. All right, Hammond High gets three scholarships and two alternates. First scholarship winner is Kalisha Sykes. Second scholarship winner is Christina Villanueva. And this guy means business, so our third scholarship winner is Miriam Villagomez. Two. Okay, alternate number one, Trishawn Neal. And alternate number two is Jennifer Corral, C-O-R-R-A-L. Okay, then we go to Hast. We get one scholarship winner and two alternates. The scholarship winner is Alana Boykin. First alternate, Derek Swart. And second alternate? You're okay. Skylar Cruz. And the last one is Morton. All right, five.
You're the only one in the room for Morton, Scott.
Five scholarships and two alternates. Who's our first winner? Our first winner is Aislinn Gonzalez. Gonzalez is the last name. And A-I-S-L-I-N-N is the first name. Okay, second winner, Brooklyn Mejia, M-E-J-I-A. Third scholarship winner, Abel Cervantes. Fourth scholarship winner, Autumn McCartney. And the fifth winner is Matthew Bandi. Okay, then we do two alternates. The first alternate, Alessandra Torres. And the second alternate, Zion Gates. And that should do it for the, and we will see you back on the 14th and we'll have all the documentation for you, so. Thank you, thank you very much. No problem. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Yeah, I got.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Spatelli?
Motion accepted, minutes April 9, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Kalwinski, to, for approval of minutes from April 9th. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of claims.
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Councilman.
Move for approval of claims April 4th, 2018 through April 18, 2018 for meeting April 23rd, 2018. Beginning of claims dated 4/11/18 and ending of claims dated 4/18/18. Claim number 2227 through claim number 2507 for a total of $7,402,748.44 ISO move.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs for approval of claims beginning April 4th through April 18th, 2018. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich, yes. Spatelli?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to public hearings.
Item A, ordinance 18-05 sponsored by Councilman Warple. And ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2018 Gaming Fund. Item B, ordinance 18-06 sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. And ordinance to appropriate funds in the motel, motel innkeeper's tax fund for economic development purposes. And item C, ordinance 18-08 sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. And ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year 2018.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance number 1805, 1806, or 1808? Public hearings is now open. You will have five minutes to address your concerns and please state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance number 1805, 1806, or 1808? Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance number 1805, 1806, or 1808? Please approach the podium. Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to communications. Any communications?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
HC3, also known as Festival of Commerce and Community Creative, will have a public meeting tomorrow at 5:00 PM at Freddie Steakhouse and Mayor McDermott will be the guest speaker there.
All righty, thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications are now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Finance Committee will be ringing out 1805, 1806, and 1808.
Thank you. And at this time, I would also, as I usually do, like to read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Wednesday, May 2nd, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School beginning at 6:30 PM and Mayor McDermott will be the speaker. Edison on the Road will meet Friday, May 11th, at the Golden Manor Senior Building on the corner of 175th and Columbia. That is beginning at 1:00 PM. Harrison Park will meet Tuesday, May 1st, 6:30 PM at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, May 4th, 9:15 AM at Irving School. Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet Tuesday, April 24th, 6:30 PM at the American Legion on Goslin. The Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, April, I'm sorry, May 10th, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. Also coming up is Coffee with a Cop this Wednesday, which is April 25th, I believe it is, beginning at 5:00 PM at Shoup's on the Boulevard. It's a great opportunity for you to come out and meet the police officers who patrol your neighborhood. Sometimes when you have an issue, it's much easier to speak to someone that you're familiar with. So come on out and meet the police officers. Also, coming up this year is the 2018 Hammond Security Light Program that is sponsored by Mayor McDermott, of course, Hammond Community Watch, Hammond Community Development, and Hammond Urban Enterprise Association. Anyone who owns or owns and resides in their home will qualify for a free dusk-to-dawn security light. You must own and reside in your Hammond home. You must provide proof of homeownership and provide a valid driver's license or state ID. Applications will be taken in person only beginning June 4th going through June 8th here at City Hall in room 115. Supplies are limited, so it is on a first-come, first-served basis. And that's all I have. I forgot what I was going to say, actually. All righty, committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final reading.
Ordinance 18-05 sponsored by Councilman Warple. And ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2018 Gaming Fund.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of 1805.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs for final passage of 1805. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
If I could have the city controller step to the podium and explain, I had a question about 2017, 3rd District, 151,028.26, account number 18240439020550. Which particular project is that designated for in my district?
Councilman, you have that, I'm sorry, under the appropriate from, it just is the general 3rd District, the 151, is that what you said?
Yeah.
That is your general unencumbered gaming dollars. So that's from your general fund when you get the annual budget, the amount that you're allowed to spend on park or engineering projects in your district. You did not spend 151,000 of that and so it will just be rolled over into your general gaming dollars for 2018. So whereas underneath the park designation or the engineering designation, those are dollars that you appropriated to your park district funds or your engineering district funds to be used, you know, whether for the sidewalk program or park expenses. So this is general dollars that have not been used in any way yet.
What about the other one for $56,000? Where does that come from?
The 3rd District?
Yes. At the bottom.
Closed POs. So those were projects that you had designated throughout the year that you wanted to commit dollars to and we would set a purchase order and bill against those contract for the purchase order. And the budget either came in under budget or there was a project that you decided not to move forward with throughout the year. So we've worked very hard to make sure we're closing out the POs timely so that we can reallocate those funds to the district and allow you to spend those dollars on new projects.
So currently, what is the total amount allocated for 2018 for my district?
I could not tell you that number because I do not have your current, to date, cash balance in front of me today. These numbers will all be transferred over to the appropriate accounts and will be added to your cash balance as of today. And if you would like for me to provide you with that number, we can update it and send it up to the council office.
I would appreciate that. And one other question I have for you, in terms of the Festival of the Lakes, are the district councilmen allowed to make donations for this event?
Yes.
So is there a certain sponsorship?
You will need to contact Anna Muda, the Special Events Coordinator. She handles all of those sponsorships. I don't get involved in that part, but she can tell you what is offered to any of our, any sponsorship opportunities out there for the council or any other local vendors.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please on 1805.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spatelli?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes. 1805 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 18-06 sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. And ordinance to appropriate funds in the hotel motel innkeeper's tax fund for economic development purposes.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Spatelli?
Final passage of 1806.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Warple, that was?
Yes.
All righty, thank you. For final passage of 1806. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
This comes before us every year. The Hammond Economic Development Department is requesting appropriation of $6,229.19 for training, advertisement material, and promotional materials.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please on 1806.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spatelli?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakels?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes. 1806 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 18-08 sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. And ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year 2018.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Spatelli?
Final passage of 1808.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson for final passage of 1808. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Spatelli?
Ordinance is to appropriate funds for 2018 plan grant for the CDBG, ESG, and the home funds.
Okay, any other discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs?
If I could have a one step to the podium. If I could have a wanted step to the podium and give me some ideas of any programs that are gonna be affected as it relates to the citizens of this great city.
Councilman, currently in our budget, under our CDBG budget, we have housing rehabs, we have public services, we have, under ESG, we have homeless services, under our home dollars. We partner with United Neighborhoods, Inc., for, under the CHODO program. Currently, there is one point nine million that we're talking about for CDBG. Home dollars is about five hundred and sixty thousand, and our ESG dollars is a hundred and seventy-four thousand. We have not received our allocations for 2018. As of today, our fiscal year started April 1st. Last year, 2017, we didn't receive our funds until January of this year. So we definitely have to be mindful of what's going on in Washington. I have a meeting tomorrow in Indianapolis to possibly discuss when those allocations will come. But as of right now, what you're approving is based on our last year's numbers.
So you don't have any particular programs that you can identify that will be cut?
It really affects all of our, the whole budget, depending on what they're gonna do. I really don't know. Under public services, we have childcare, we have, we deal with seniors, we do mentoring programs. Our ESG dollars, they service our three shelters in the city. We have a Greater Hammond takes care of our rapid rehousing program, our ramp program, emergency. So it's just across the board. We really just don't know.
Any other questions, Councilman? Alrighty, any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please on eighteen oh eight.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Eighteen oh eight passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vanez, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance eighteen dash eleven, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. And ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen being, and ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, excuse me, in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for purposes of amending various titles to incorporate provisions for the regulation of a data center.
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
I move that eighteen eleven passed through first and second reading with an intent to consider for May 14, 2018, and also refer it to council as a whole for a meeting at 5:15 PM on May 14, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, for first and second reading of eighteen dash one, referring to council as a whole with a meeting at 5:15 on 5/14, with an intent to consider on 5/14. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
President Vanez, that concludes introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Now we will move on to resolutions.
Item A, Resolution eighteen R sixteen, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, related to certain waterworks revenue bonds.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I move for passage for eighteen R dash sixteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, for final passage of eighteen R sixteen. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
This is a bond initiated by the Water Department, approved by their board, for seven, seven point five million dollars, with better than five million of those dollars going into upgrading electrical equipment at the waterfront filtration plant, as well as engineering costs, as well as painting of two of the water towers, one at Harrison, and the other at Soul, in Michigan.
Alrighty, thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I think it was discussed in caucus, and one of the questions that was opposed to our superintendent of waters, it was that whether or not there was gonna be an increase in our water bill, and he stated to us that it would not be an increase.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Eighteen R sixteen passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, eight, Resolution eighteen R seventeen. The petitioners are Department of Planning and Development, and the sponsors, Councilman Warple. A declaratory resolution of the Hammond City Council designating that a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, be established as the Oxbow Number One Economic Revitalization Area to which deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the Common Council of the City of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for passage of eighteen R seventeen.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakos, for final passage of Resolution eighteen R seventeen. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
This is just a standard declaratory resolution for a tax abatement at the Hotel at Oxbow Landing.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
As I stated previously, I wish I could afford to own some of that property over there. That land is very beautiful, and if you could just drive down eighty ninety-four and look off the expressway, what a, what a pleasure to look at something that was once vacant that now houses restaurants, as well as hotels, and also offices and law firms.
Yes, you are right. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please on eighteen R seventeen.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Eighteen R seventeen passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to new unfinished business.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I received a correspondence from Dean Button, and it says, Anthony W. Higgs, Third District Councilman, this is in response to your letter we received on four seventeen eighteen regarding the status of Cleveland. We currently have no status to update. If this project you would like to visit in the near future, and we are more than happy to help. Currently, we are focused on two reconstruction designs on one hundred and sixty-fourth from McCook to Kennedy and Erie from Carroll to Eaton. One hundred and sixty-fourth will be built out this year with an estimate of nine hundred thousand dollars, with the possibility of finishing construction, uh, spring of 2019. Erie is a little further out, with the possible of bidding and constructing in 2019. If funding is available, with an estimate of one million dollars. Thank you, and always please contact us, the Engineering Department, with any questions or concerns.
Thank you. Any other new unfinished business? Any other new unfinished business? Councilman Torres.
I would like a letter sent to our engineer, Mr. Button, and also to the mayor's office, to initiate, uh, the design engineering, the cost of, and whatever cost there is, making no train horn, or silent zone, as they refer to it. Michigan Central tracks, fifty-one hundred soul, just north of Willow Court. I believe I can find the money for that, if I can just have the study. And if it can be done this year, I appreciate it.
Alrighty. Motion by Councilman Torres.
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs, to have a letter sent to Engineering and the mayor's office with regard to design and engineering at fifty-one hundred soul regarding a silent zone. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess my question would be, although he's sending a letter, how do you propose arriving or getting this to be executed in terms of silencing, I guess, for the trains from blowing their horns? Because, in all due respect, you wanna kinda save lives, and if you don't blow the horn, and somehow or another it's not blowing, then it may become a problem. So if you can give me a little clarity, Councilman Torres, as to what you're requesting, a little more clear, I can understand it.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman.
Silence zones are, they prepare that, uh, that right away, in a way that it's hard for traffic to get through the, in the pedestrian sidewalks. It's done in other cities, I believe Griffith, Sherbilly, Highland has done it.
Whiting.
Whiting? Okay. So, that's why I would like a study, to see what it takes. And also, I'd be interested in what the safety consequences are. For example, if, if there had been any accidents involving pedestrians or, or traffic in, in the locations where these silent zones have been established. So, that's what I'm looking for, as part of the study and design. But I get a lot of calls from the Renaissance that they've been promised that in the past, and I believe we can get it started now.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that?
I second the Councilwoman.
Alrighty, thank you. Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs, to have a letter sent to Engineering and the mayor with regard to a silent zone at fifty-one hundred soul. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I did receive a correspondence in regards to Cleveland from Kennedy Avenue to McCook, in regards, I guess the street is narrow, and that was one of my reasons for requesting, and seeing what we can do to have that reconstructed over there by Kennedy Avenue, because Cleveland is so narrow that the residents are parking, actually, across their curbside, and I guess they were getting some tickets, at least one resident called me and said he was getting tickets. So I was trying to come up with a solution, but unfortunately, that street has to be designed in order for it to even be constructed, so, and we don't even know exactly what the cost would be at the present time, but that is something that I am certainly looking. There have been a number of streets over there that I have had the opportunity of having developed. One was Clerk Golick's street where his parents lived, and as well as some lighting, and we're working on one hundred and sixty-four. So we're trying to get some streets done over there, as many as possible, so hopefully we can get that done. And I see the engineer out there, so we're working on it. Thanks.
So that was simply a statement, no letter?
No, no letter.
Alrighty, thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Um, I just wanted to say that I noticed, yes, no, last Friday, I noticed a project that the Fifth District and the Fourth District is doing there on one hundred and seventy-third Street started, and if they do nothing else, the street looks better already. But it'll be paved in the next day or two. It's stripped down.
Long overdue. Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Hammond's Fourteenth Cinco de Mayo will be Saturday, May 5th, 2018, from five to ten at the Hammond City Center, fifty-eight twenty-five, Soul Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, four six three two oh. Entertainment will be provided, and tickets are fifteen dollars. If you're interested in purchasing the ticket, feel free to call, two one nine eight five three six three seven eight. Two one nine eight five three six three seven eight. Happy Cinco de Mayo.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
The city of Hammond, Mayor McDermott are in partnership with Region Racing, powered by Strack and Ventil, to bring back the Region Riot Criterion Bike Race to the city of Hammond on Saturday, May 12th, 2018, from eight AM till six PM. For more information or to register, go to gorregionriot.com. Gorregionriot.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Uh, I would be remiss if I didn't say, um, thank you, Carson Superior Scott, for your longevity and your contributions to the city of Hammond. You were surely be missed. It's unfortunate that you filed, had to file bankruptcy and close, but it's a store that I remember for a number of years, and, uh, what can you say? It's, it's not gonna be the same, uh, going down Indianapolis, although I did not see in Carson's, but certainly, we thank you for your contributions to our city.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? At this time, I would like to, um, extend an invitation. The Hammond Education Foundation invites you to celeb, celebrate Blueprint, which is, excuse me, a program that Mrs. Myrick made reference to before with regard to the seniors at all of our high schools. Blueprint, 2018 College Signing Day, is Thursday, May 3rd, from 12 noon to 1:30 PM. There is a program and a reception at the Hammond Area Career Center at fifty-seven twenty-seven Soul. They would like for you to RSVP. The number is nine three three twenty-four hundred, at extension ten forty-four. There will be free professional photography provided at this event. Anyone looking to go to college and looking for some direction with the application process and more, I urge everyone to attend this. That is Thursday, May 3rd, from 12 noon to 1:30 PM. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. The first speaker of the evening is Jim Tufford. Sir, this is your opportunity to express your opinion. You have three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Jim Tufford, Munster, Indiana. And about anything that you, you buy nowadays, everybody, they, they figure in their costs, their raw materials, fixed costs, labor, all that sort of stuff, at profit as well. The Hammond San area district does not do that. It, their prices- Their prices are all over the range. To give you an example, and they are also discriminatory against multi-unit buildings. For example, if you have a, and this is, all this is residential, if you have a residential house that uses 5,000 gallons a month, their cost for the district per month is going to be $19.95. Excuse me. That's about $3.99 per thousand. If you take a four-unit, multi-unit building, and those same 5,000 gallons are going to cost $45.15, or $9.03 per thousand, so that it's more than twice what single-family residences are paying. And say that they went, during the winter, they went to Florida for maybe three weeks, and they only used 1,000 gallons, each of them only used 1,000 gallons for the month. The cost for the single-family would be $10.71. The cost for the multifamily building would be almost $36, about four times as much. It's the same sewage, it's all residential, but it's discriminatory against multi-unit buildings. The Indiana code says that the fees are supposed to be just inequitable, but for something that is at least twice as much is not just inequitable. And the, two reasons I can think of for having that in law, that's 36-9-25-11, by the way, is to, you know, for elected officials to know what their boundaries are, and then it's for the people to know what to expect from the elected officials. So the bottom line is, well, let me also say, the reason that we are paying more is because theoretically, we were told we're sloughing off. We're not financing the thing, the district, like we're supposed to. But like in Munster, on our taxes, you got eight and a half to nine and a half percent of our tax bill, property tax bill, goes to the Hammond Sanitary District. And I assume some of that, all of it maybe is for paying off bonds of some sort. And if those bonds are being paid off for sewer separation, then, and we've already had our sewer separation, so I mean, we're more than contributing, it is because of our concentration of our, of the buildings, that's why you're getting more money out of us. So I would request that when they, they're doing the cost of study at some point in the next few months, I think, so that it should, the cost should be based on the sewage and get rid of this, what they're now calling the base amount. It used to be called the admin fee. But I think to be fair to everybody, the, have everybody, no matter what kind of residential sewage it is, that it be one rate for all of us.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker of the evening is George Stoya.
I'd be happy to shoot my time if you're going to just vote, if you want to continue, otherwise. I'm serious, if you want my time.
It is interesting, though, but...
So you're taking a pass, George? All righty. Public expression is now closed.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Everyone have a good evening.